Tonight is Monday, September 8th, 2008. This evening, City Council is meeting in a series of four different committee meetings, starting with the Transportation Committee. Transportation Committee Chair Christine.
Thank you, President Bias. I have three items tonight that we're aware of. Two of them will be street closings. The first one is an ordinance that we will be presenting for a street closing for the Athens Uptown Halloween. And this will be on Monday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. And that's for a trick-or-treat that's hosted by the Athens Uptown Business Association. And we have Josh Thomas here tonight to talk with us, answer any questions that we might have. Josh, do you want to come up and tell us a little bit about it?
Basically, a few years ago, we, at the Uptown Business Association, tried to organize a trick-or-treat night for the Athens kids. Our first year was fairly successful. We brought a little over 100 kids into the Uptown area. And then over the last two years, we've actually just grown and grown, to where last year we had, you know, good 400 to 500 kids that came uptown, all dressed in costume with their parents, and it was really a big success. The night went very well. Our only concern last year, when we got so many kids, was that we were concerned about the traffic. We had a lot of incidents where there were a lot of people waiting on the corners across the street, big crowds, you know, and our fear is all it takes is one person that just doesn't see a kid in a costume, or a kid that's wearing a costume that doesn't see very well. And so, a number of parents and a number of business owners brought to my attentions and maybe we should try to have the street closed just for the few hours, you know. We don't need it closed for the entire day, but possibly just for that evening, for the 5:00 to 7:00 time that we have the kids on the street, the traffic just not be going down Court Street.
And I think we had, thank you, Josh, I think we had some questions about whether the cars needed to be removed. And Paula, if I'm understanding correctly, Chief Police Mayor said that it would be safer to have the cars removed from the street rather than having them, some of them remain on the area. So we will need to have it closed. And the time would be, as is proposed, would be from 2:00 to 7:00.
They have to begin restrictions at that time for the parking, so that people would know.
So on Court Street from Union to Carpenter?
Council could consider relaxing the parking garage costs during that time in order to encourage them to, people coming in to be able to park in the parking garage.
That was a suggestion that had been brought to me also, I think that's what we did with Boogie on the Brakes. So that a number of parents, when they do come uptown, if they can't park on Court Street, they maybe be able to find a space in the garage and not have to worry about the cost.
Oh, so for those hours, then, to say that that wouldn't be monitored? Okay, to encourage participation, okay.
What was the date again, I'm sorry?
27th, 10/27th is a Monday. It's a Monday before the big kids' Halloween.
And when is the, when is the community center?
Thursday. Thursday, that's Thursday.
Okay, so no conflict, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I promise not to have a beer garden for the little kids.
Thank you, that's reassuring.
I'm disappointed.
Okay, well, thank you very much. And we'll be proceeding with an ordinance for this, then.
Thank you.
Thank you. The second street closing will be for Saturday, October 18th, and this is going to be closing a portion of Washington Street. And it would be from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. And it would be for the dedication of an historic marker commemorating the residents where Booker T. Washington and Olivia Davidson were married. So this is an exciting historic event, and it sounds great. And there will be a ceremony at which President McDavis will speak, and there will be a representative from Tuskegee College and heirs of the family and others present. So, we're looking forward to that.
I believe he got married at his sister's house, if I remember my Athens history correct?
Okay.
Correctly?
Interesting.
Speak correctly.
Okay.
Jim, did you have a question?
What portion of Washington? I'm not familiar with this.
This is, hold on, I'm sure somebody's given me the details. From South Schaefer to South Lancaster.
All the street?
South Schaefer to South Lancaster. Okay. Okay.
Do we have to?
All right.
Do we have to? All we have to do is rip it off and shuffle.
Any other questions or concerns? Mayor Wong?
If I remember the houses, is Maple and Washington, is that the case?
I think it's Pratt.
Pratt and Washington?
Mm-hmm.
So is it possible to actually not have to close the entire street or all the way up to Lancaster? I think travel through, okay, there's a couple. Well, you'd go down to Smith, and then you turn down Smith. So that would cover the one way that way. And then, the other way would be coming up from Maple, not that we'd close off the Schaefer. The next question, of course, do we remove the cars?
No.
No, not necessarily?
They don't need the cars removed, but I think the reason for closing it up to Lancaster is because they're going to also go to the West State Street Cemetery.
Oh, okay.
They're having some tumors.
Okay, no problem on that, then, I understand.
Okay.
They can always take that little right-of-way off the side.
Any other concerns or questions, points we should think about? The third item for us to consider is a letter that was addressed to City Council about the noise on Richland Avenue, the noise that's generated from Route 33. So I'd like to ask Councilmember Kuhn to give a little bit of the detailed information on that, so we're all aware of it.
I received an email from Sharon Yulish, who is very concerned about the noise on Richland Avenue from the highway. And she would like a barrier there. And she said that City Council and ODOT have ignored that for years, and she would like us to do something about that. She would also like the engine brake law enforced. So maybe the Service Safety Director or the mayor could enlighten us a little bit about the engine brake law and the possibility of a barrier. I know that the street director is not available at the moment.
Okay. In terms of the barrier, I don't know, depends on what section we're talking about in both Richland Avenue and 33. I remember perfectly reading about some of this stuff, and it actually has some implications. When you put a barrier up on one side, it just rebounds and goes somewhere else.
Oh.
But I'll probably wait till Andy gets back before talking to, I would have him talk to ODOT and see what's going on.
Good idea.
As for the brake law, I don't know if we've ever caught anybody with that, or have we?
Not that I'm aware of, but we can bring it to the police chief's attention and ask for response and how enforcement will be maintained.
And I do know, I think within the past year, I thought some engine brake laws were, signs were posted towards that Route 33 exit.
I've seen them.
But, Councilmember Phillips?
When that was enacted, I think the signs are about this big.
Okay.
And there was a lot of concern that in other communities, they're more visible, that they're larger, more visible, and maybe that's something we should look into.
Okay.
The engine brake noise is, you know, distinctly an issue on the east side as well.
Okay.
My constituents have talked with me about that over the years and would like to see greater enforcement on that as well.
Okay.
I suspect on the east side is mostly the 33 going downhill, which is technically outside the city limits. So maybe we should be talking to ODOT about putting signage on 33 at some.
Do you want to?
No? Are you thinking about 682 for the west side, the south side?
Well, I was thinking Palmeroy Hill Road is what I call it.
That's originally what was signed for, but.
But it's certainly within the city's limits.
Yeah, and that's no longer used as a thoroughfare for most trucks anymore.
Well, that's true, yeah.
It's no, you know, it's essentially banned.
So it's got to be people coming off the highway, is that what we're thinking, at least on that side?
I think folks coming east on 33, like between Columbus Road and East State, I think there's some braking happening there.
And likewise, the other way, from, or correct, from further east, that are coming over on the bypass and coming down the Richland Avenue exit, where it's a fairly steep descent.
And in both cases, they're, for the most part, outside the city limits. I mean, we could put some stuff there, I imagine, or talk to ODOT about putting some.
Okay.
But then, you know, that becomes jurisdiction in terms of, you know, stuff like that, too. We'll check, as best we can do.
Thank you.
I did receive a copy of that letter as well.
Oh, did you?
And to the best of my knowledge, there aren't any miscellaneous items, but unless council members have others to raise, that's all? Thank you.
On to planning and development.
Excuse me, Mayor Wong, go ahead.
Nothing.
I close.
I'm sorry. Paul?
You're aware that we are having a public hearing for the transit, the 30s. I think I mentioned that last time.
Thank you. And that's at 7:00?
7:00.
7:00?
Here.
And that's a Tuesday night?
Yes.
September 30th?
Okay.
Thanks.
Now planning and development? Okay. The first thing on our agenda is a request for a revocable license for the placement of a sign within the city right-of-way. I think you have a packet of documents regarding this, and the one on top is the actual application. This is for 540 West Union Street. There are some good site plans and a rendering of the sign. I went out and visited the location, and this sign would replace three existing signs at that address, which are taller than the proposed sign. There are three existing signs there that are larger than and taller than the proposed sign, and the proposed sign is more of a monument sign, which I think some folks have expressed an interest in seeing more monument signs as a more attractive form of signage. I stood and looked at the location, and it seems to me that there's a pretty clear line of sight when you're turning out of the driveway. We do have an email from Chuck Miller that was from earlier, fairly early in August, that he didn't have some of these documents. These documents are now all in place. He also expressed some concern about the line of sight, but from standing there, it seems to me that you can see the entire street clearly in both directions, the signs in a more logical location in relation to the driveway, and it reduces the existing signage that's out there. So, you know, I would recommend that we go ahead and approve this. And I don't know if the Service Safety Director has anything to add on this.
Just to confirm that all the additional information has been provided, and it will clean up, like I think you indicated, quite a bit of signage that's there now. It'll make it all on one nice monument.
We have the letters from the adjacent property owners. They've paid their application fee, all of those questions that were in the email from Chuck have been answered. Does anybody have any other questions? We'll have that up for first reading next week. If, if folks are so inclined, because this application was filed quite a while ago before our, let's see, August 5th, and we were on a lengthy recess, I'd like to ask for suspension when we get there, because they did apply quite a while ago, and it will reduce an existing noncomplacency. So, if we don't have any objections to that, I'll go ahead and ask for suspension next week. Okay?
Sounds good.
Thanks. I do have one miscellaneous item. Alahu, I think, has some documents to pass around. There was a meeting three weeks ago or so, from, between some construction tradespeople and myself and the administration to talk about responsible bidder criteria for the city of Athens. We have some draft criteria here, and I think Alahu's prepared to, you know, talk us through this a little bit, why this might be something we should consider.
Well, this is something that I have, I've been aware of this, this approach to ensuring that you have good contractors. For a couple of years, I worked with some local labor unions a few years ago, and the university, in trying to get some contractor criteria such as this. Basically, what it does is it makes sure that price on bidders for city contracts is not the only thing the city looks at. It looks at the record of the contractor. It provides a way for the city to make sure that we're selecting not only a good, a low-cost contractor, but to make sure that we're going to be getting quality work out of that. This has, I believe it's, let me make sure I'm correct, yeah, just about 20 different criteria that define what a responsible contractor is, and I'm not going to go through all of them. That would be unnecessary, and just introduce it here. But it has, goes through, and some of that has to do with the way they treat their employees, make sure that they pay their employees fairly. It also requires that they have good records with EPA and don't have a certain number of And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you were at a meeting before this was discussed?
I was at one of these meetings.
And what's, what was your take on?
I think it's a good idea, just besides going for price, the idea, the way I walked away with it is actually using standards in terms of the building records, references, so to speak. I mean, if you were going to do something on your house, you'd ask for references in terms of, you wouldn't just go with the lowest bid and see how well the jobs were done. So in one sense, you're looking at just not pricing, but rather, you know, where they've done good work in previous jobs.
And one of the major benefits that this can provide is, most of the responsible bidders would likely be from this area. This would, because we have, I mean, we have a lot of good contractors around here, but sometimes they're competing against out-of-town, big out-of-town contractors that come in and they don't pay fair wages, they don't necessarily follow, follow all the safety regulations that they should. So this would also, I think, help local economy, or at least this region of the state, or it has that potential, at least.
The other issue, I think, is that it helps to provide some, some basis on which the city bases its decisions. So if, if there's a contractor who has had safety violations or hasn't been in compliance with OSHA, or has, you know, had work that was not quality work on other projects, the city is allowed to consider those criteria in making decisions about awarding contracts. So it provides some legal protection to the city. This is a fairly new thing for us to talk about here. So Alahu and I talked a little bit before the meeting that people should be able to take a look at this, and then we could talk about it again.
Would the expectation be, then, that this would be implemented through a resolution ultimately?
A policy that the council would approve, and then the administration would be able to work with.
And on a side note, this, I know it's been discussed before, registration of contractors at various levels, and that's something that would eventually come through, too. That would require your say-so on that. And that would take some time to put something together there. But again, this is the other thing you hear regularly, having sat through council many years, is, you know, the idea that you, there's no real way to follow who's the contractor and who is just, you know, somebody with a hammer out there.
The county has adopted a similar type, one-page sheet on the responsible bidder criteria.
I'm just wondering, who, who administers this? Who's in charge of keeping track of this? Oh, okay, sure.
It would be on a policy level, and when we do bids, so it'd end up in the board.
But I mean, seriously, collecting this information?
Oh, data.
Keeping it current?
I'd say through the board.
As I was reading down it, well, everything I see in there is a notable goal, everything. I can't imagine collecting that information from everybody that's bidding. Now, maybe you could develop a form or something that, if you're going to bid, then you must fill this out, and then if they are found to have lied on the form, put the burden on them, maybe, and handle it that way, but there's, you know, if you really are truly doing a complete background check on what I just went through and, 20 things, that would be significant.
And I believe the county has, like, a checklist, you know?
You know, when we think back on where you called itself a child labor, you know, up on the hill, none of us want to be a part of that.
And we've had to go back and repair things that we paid to have done before. I think it's a way for us to protect the taxpayers' investment.
I think we've gotten called to just about everything that anybody that's ever hired contractors in the private sector have gotten called for. So, you know, it's, it's all a noble goal, some of them maybe, you know?
So the idea would be, put this in with the RFP, put a checklist, as you say. That'd be the first step, really. And after that, we could evolve it as time goes on.
So since this is new, if people would take the time to read it through, we could talk about it again in two weeks and hopefully bring forward a resolution after that. Okay? Are there any other?
Would this be a one-reading resolution? Do you know, Pat?
Why wouldn't it be a resolution, if it's going to be a policy?
I was just asking about the, initially, what the intent was for council to, was this a council, was this something the council was adopting, or we were giving this to the administration with, you know, for them to?
Could be an ordinance form, could it not?
Could be. I think you could probably do it by resolution as well, but, you know, we're obviously not at that step yet.
I just think of resolution as not having the full effect of law where an ordinance does, but it could be a three-reading resolution.
Right. Oh, clearly it would be a three-reading.
Okay, okay, fine.
Can you let us know, then, the right format for that when we come back to it in two weeks? Any other miscellaneous for planning and development? Matt, where do you?
Do you have any appropriate?
No.
Onto the Environment Committee.
I have, Logan Gossner. Thank you. I have a couple of things tonight. The first one is a somewhat minor revision to Title 27, the Land Development Ordinance, and I'm seeing faces.
Oh, no, we're looking at something else, sorry.
Okay.
Focus, Paul, focus.
Well, you know, okay, go ahead. No, I'm sorry.
We are simply updating a reference to a manual that's cited in numerous parts of Title 27. We're replacing a 1987 reference with a 2006 reference called Rainwater and Land Development Manual. So it's also referenced in a few places in Title 21, and we will be replacing it in there as well. I'll have to have another, another, would that be the same, are the same ordinance, or another one?
They would be two separate ones.
Okay, so they'll be going through together, it's just replacing, replacing this reference. Do we have any comments?
And attaching the new soils classifications.
That's right, thank you. There's Appendix A of Title 27 will just be replaced with a new classification table. And this has been, Soil and Water Conservation District has provided this to us and made the recommendation to update the manual reference. Any comments? Pretty straightforward. Second is hazardous waste pickup. Last year, we had, for the first time, we had a hazardous waste pickup in the city, and as I understand it, went really well. We, I don't have the exact numbers with me tonight, but we collected quite a bit of material. And for a city of our size, it's suggested that you have that type of pickup once every two years. So we did not do one this year, so that would mean next year, perhaps, we should get one going. And I'm just going to ask the mayor to comment a little bit, since he got this last one moving last year.
Well, actually, last year we did it, and it wouldn't, most people wouldn't mind doing it every year, actually. It cost us about $15,000, we appropriated $15,000 last year. I think we spent only a little bit under $12,000. The number that's generated for that, it has to do with the population and the percentage of how many people actually show up with hazardous waste. It was not the community center, we did it through the organization with the Athens Hocking Recycling District. Mostly the thrust of that at the time, and I was in the same position, Alahu is, was to get them involved so they saw how it was done. I was hoping that they'd take it over to the county, but obviously they didn't put it into their budget to decide to do that. So some of the things to think about is, you know, appropriating about $15,000 to do it this year, if you choose. We could go through the county again, or we could just contract it straight out ourselves. I think it was a corporation and Cincinnati. The way I'm told is about three companies that do this type of stuff. They lay everything down, they basically put a big tarp down over the community center. I don't know if any of you went there that day. It was fairly well organized, it was a good flow-through of material. I think the county actually, the county Athens Hocking Waste District people actually picked up most of the tires, but there were very few, if I remember, comparatively few. I think there was a stop or a station for e-waste in terms of printers and computers and monitors. There was a dead battery zone, they seemed to get a lot of those, paints both latex and oil-based. And again, their disposal of it is mostly incineration in terms of the organic materials. And the other ones, I assume they break down and dispose it properly on the way out. But again, it kind of got rid of a lot of stuff that's been accumulating within the city. The best-case scenario would be that the district itself take it over, but if we're into it this year, we could do this as well. I got a lot of good feedback last year on it, just because people have stuff like this piled up. So it's your, it's your call whether you want to schedule it for this year or next year. Every other year is what Alahu mentioned, every year it's about, as I say, I don't know if it'd be higher or lower than the $15,000. It's always a question of, did we get all the stuff that piled up over several years, or are we going to create more of a stir, more people going to show up, because this is something they've seen, but they've heard about before.
We're starting to get into a time constraint again if we do it this year, I just want to throw that out, because I think about this time last year, it was like, go ahead and have a hazardous material, we were able to fit it in in November. But Alahu's correct, in terms of, they indicate to the city of this population, it would be at once every two years.
I'd like to go ahead and put this in place for next year. Maybe we can do it a little bit earlier in the year than November, you said, was?
Yeah. Ideally, you know, with this kind of planning time, you would do it to the same as the cleanup week, where you have the spring cleanup and people are already doing that way when they're clearing things out, and that's what the street department service garage indicates to us, is they get a lot of stuff, junky stuff, or this way it can be separated now, so.
That's a good idea.
Actually, that would mean that really what you want to look at is thinking about putting this in the budget for next year. And if we're thinking of the spring, I would actually suggest increasing the number a little higher, just for that reason. Just because the seasonality of the population in the, in the city would be such that you might get more than you expect.
And I'm wondering if, if in the future, it might be worthwhile to include this regularly in our contract with the Solid Waste District, and just roll it in so that it's automatic and?
One of the many elements we have to work on.
But we'll see when it comes time to renegotiate that.
It's a good idea.
And miscellaneous, I have one thing, I will have to get handouts to people later because our copier is out of toner at the moment. Before we left for our August recess, I was looking at a green fleets ordinance, and it would establish a policy for the city in terms of procuring new vehicles. So near the end of August, I had something, a draft written up, and I'm going to distribute this to council and to mayor's office. And for input and review, and anyone that has any, any comments, please let me know. Basically, it has a few parts to it. One is establishing a baseline, so basically it just outlines certain information that the city will put together, and we already have most of it, I think, in an Excel file, where we just have all the vehicles listed with their model year and information like that. The second part of it actually outlines several different policies that can be used to help achieve a more efficient, greener fleet. And I'm not going to go through them all right now, but at my next committee meeting, we can have a discussion on what's in there. And there's also, it would establish a Green Fleets Committee, which would meet at least yearly and review the progress the city's made in achieving certain goals that are also outlined in here for reducing, increasing fuel efficiency across the board and decreasing pollution from our vehicles. So please, take some time to look at this, and probably the most important feedback is going to be coming from your office. And I hope it's something that we can work with, and if you foresee maybe a slightly different approach we can take that would achieve the same goal, I'd be happy to look at that, too.
And send us an electronic copy of it.
And that concludes the Environment Committee, unless anyone has anything else. Thanks.
Finance and Personnel is pretty short. We have a couple of requests for some appropriations. We have a couple of requests for some appropriations. The mayor asked me just a few minutes ago to look at appropriation in fund number 214, which is dealing with transportation budget and the buses. We have a couple buses that we are buying, and turns out, they lack fareboxes and lockable vaults for the money to go into. So we need to equip those buses with those devices, obviously. They're pricing about $760 each, so the suggestion is that we increase this appropriation by about $2,000 to allow for purchase of two fareboxes with attached bolts, some installation, whatever else needs to be done. So we'd be bringing that up next week for first reading. Any questions about that? The buses should arrive--
End of September, and that's the problem. Basically, we pay for the buses, then we get some money back from it. There's, the buses were budgeted last year for the grant at about, I think it was 41, $42,000 per bus, but actually, it's close to 56. So we've appropriated, I think we've encumbered about $115,000 for the both of the buses, which is tying up our cash flow on that end. We have yet to get rid of the other two buses that were put out on eBay, but they had no takers.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah, so I think--
So we could be looking at scrap--
Scrap metal, I think, yeah.
Okay, so we have some new buses, so if they're coming the end of September, we may, again, we might need to suspend on this to get those funds available?
Possibly, yes.
Well, you'll give me some guidance by next week.
Okay.
The auditor is asking us if, again, we can add $2,000 to a fund. This would be the refund line in the water department. There have been some billing errors that have resulted in overpayments, and we need to refund those monies. There's no money, there's not adequate money in the refund line, so we need--
The auditor is asking on behalf of me. We've never seen you totally billing off this, I just want--
Okay.
But we do need that in order to be asking.
Okay. So those are two appropriations we'll be looking at next week. Mayor, you laughed when I said there were only two.
Oh, okay.
You have something else?
The other one is the CDBG for Granville and Mary. We bid it out the first time, and it came in, I think we had estimated $115,000 at the time, and it came in, the first bid was $145,000, and then we had it relooked at, estimated, and I forget what the number was for that, but it came in about 10%, just under 10% over, so we need about, I think we're talking about $15,000 more, I think, for that particular fund.
For our matching money. Our CDBG is one of the monies limited. We'd really like to get that project done this year, though. And that's, again, would add to the whole suspension emergency.
Because that still wants to happen this season.
Yeah.
And on Granville and Mary, we're resurfacing, we're--
Adding new pipe, water pipe.
Water pipe, we're adding a hydrant, a fire hydrant.
Hydrant as well, yes.
Yeah.
Curved to it, I believe.
And anybody who's traveled that area knows that it's, it's a, some project that's needed to be completed.
It's not up to the standard of the rest of the city, I think.
And there's some really inadequate drainage that allows water to flow over people's yards, so it's something we would like to get done before winter and resulting in following spring rains, for sure. Okay.
And I have one last request, and it comes from the community center. At a minimum, they need an additional $500 for their fitness equipment financing to see them through the end of this year. He's been reviewing the budget and this and that. And he is requesting he has broken equipment. The total of that would be approximately $7,000, and whether or not, it's the time now where people are starting to go back indoors as opposed to being outside. He has replacement of two-steppers, stairmasters, repair of two cross trainers, and pads on plate load and side backs.
Did you hear--
No.
Okay.
I just learned of that today. I'd said ask anybody who needed additional monies.
Good, thank you. And so, okay, we'll come up with a suggestion. I mean, there was 500 to 7,000, so that's 7500.
Right. Yeah, this is the first I've heard of it, but I did talk to Rich just about a week ago and told him to look at these things to try to start moving them through before the very end of the year. And they do have some unappropriated money available, not a lot, but more than sometimes in the past. So, you know, I told him, you have some money to work with, so if you have bills and anything you need to do, you know, start it now. So that's probably where this came from.
Okay. Hopefully, have more better detail for next week, we can start talking about that. That's it for finance, personnel, unless there's any other questions right now? I just have a miscellaneous that I'm going to throw in, a quick mention from community issues. At the end, well, at some point in last week's council meeting, the mayor handed me a packet of papers that had come from Kim Welter. She's a program manager for Education and Outreach of Equality Ohio. They're looking at getting a Ohio, state of Ohio bill passed nondiscrimination policy. And several cities in Ohio, including Toledo, have passed a resolution supporting that. Debbie Walker copied a few pages and put in each person's mailbox about a copy of that resolution and some questions that are asked about this nondiscrimination policy. I have a copy of the proposed state House bill, but it's a lot of stuff that--
I gave them that.
Oh, you gave them that, too? Then you've got everything. So Ms. Welter, we have tentatively agreed that she would come to meet with us at council chambers on October 13th. That's the first committee meeting in October, I believe. And we might discuss this again at the next committee meeting to see if there are any concerns or issues in particular we'd like to have her address. But, so this, you have even more than I thought Debbie was going to give you, so look at it. In two weeks, we'll touch on it again. If you have any comments or concerns, let me know again, or in the meantime. That's it.
Having addressed all items from our agenda, we are adjourned.